We're all ready? I state your name.
Amanda Finnerty.
Jody Casias.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States and in this state.
In the United States and in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I state your name.
Jody Casias.
Joseph Bro.
Amanda Finnerty.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications.
That I possess the qualifications.
Described by law for the office of a member of the Board of Education.
Described by law for the office of a member of the Board of Education.
And that I am not disqualified.
And that I am not disqualified.
As a voter pursuant.
As a voter pursuant.
To RS 194-1.
To RS 194-1.
Nor disqualified due to a conviction of a crime.
Nor disqualified due to a conviction of a crime.
Or offense.
Or offense.
Listed.
Listed.
In NJHS.
NJHS.
18A.
18A.
12-1.
12-1.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform all the duties that the office.
And justly perform all the duties that the office.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And that's sworn in today, January 3rd, January 2019. Thank you trustees, you're all on board.
Thank you.
If we need to. And that's fine.
I did actually.
Here you use it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Joe, thank you, and that's yours.
Thank you.
Okay, trustees, before we start our open workshop at 5:30, we're just gonna break to go back inside, just go over one or two items. Okay, at this time, it's 5:30. I will open the open workshop. Just a brief statement. This is the organization meeting for the Bayonne Board of Education for 2019. Each of you is a trustee. We have no officers as yet. And we will have, we will not have until the required election, which will enable us to be legally organized. This is also a regular meeting. There will be some resolutions to dispose of after the election of officers. I will act as presiding officer pro term until the president has been duly elected. At this time, I'd like to take a roll call. Trustee Alonso.
Present.
Trustee Broder.
Present.
Trustee Casias.
Present.
Trustee Cruden.
Present.
Trustee Finnerty.
Present.
Trustee Munoz.
Here.
Trustee Valado.
Here.
Trustee Wilbeck.
Here.
At this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to the superintendent.
Thank you, Dr. Mader. Good evening, everyone. During the winter break, our shop personnel were hard at work. Some of their projects included the painting of classrooms, corridor doors, offices, construction of a new behavioral intervention office, installation of new traps and drain lines on sinks and steam tables, repair of a leak in a four-inch steam line, and various repairs to our buses. Our shop personnel did excellent work, and I extend our deep appreciation for the various jobs well done over the break. Now, we might be only a few days into the new year, however, the personnel office is already looking to recruit the best and brightest teachers for the 2019-2020 school year. The personnel and technology offices have Frontline's recruitment and hiring program up and running. And Mr. Lopez had an exciting meeting with Keene University's Dean of Education, Dr. Anthony Pittman. Mr. Lopez will give you a brief summary of that meeting and our overall recruiting plan. Mr. Lopez?
Thank you, Dr. Wonko. As our superintendent just stated, I just wanna thank the technology office and Mr. Figu for getting Frontline recruiting, hiring, and applicant tracking program. It is up and running. We posted three jobs yesterday for recent vacancies, and we'll be using Frontline for all upcoming replacements and new hires moving forward. We will also have the internal application process up and running by the time the annual postings go out, and they usually go out in March. To prepare for next September, we will have representatives at college and university job fairs across the state, to name a few, St. Peters, NJCU, College of New Jersey, Seton Hall, and Rowan. Dr. Degnan and I are planning our annual job fair with the Hudson County One Stop for the spring for our current seniors, recent graduates, and of course, our residents. Before the winter break, I did have the chance to meet with Dr. Anthony Pittman, who is the dean of education at Keene University, who came to Bayonne for about two hours to discuss opportunities that their teachers' colleges offer to districts. We will be accepting student teachers from Keene, as we already do with St. Peters and NJCU. And we will also be working with Keene University's Education Department in the areas of professional development, bilingual certifications, and research opportunities. I will keep you updated as we move forward with our new partnership with Keene University's Education Department. Any questions? Thank you, Dr. Wonko.
Frontline, will we be able to use that frontline also for the superintendent search, I'm assuming, right?
Can be.
Dr. Wonko and I had that conversation today, yes?
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Our teachers rang in the new year by honing their teaching skills as a district conducted our second staff training and development day yesterday. Additionally, there was a court ruling on New Year's Eve regarding the park assessment and high school graduation requirements. Dr. Degnan will update you on the staff training and development day, the park ruling, and the district's plan to administer the fall block park test next week to high school students not yet meeting expectations. Dr. Degnan?
Thank you, Dr. Wonko, and Happy New Year, trustees. This was one of the best in, have you read? This was one of the best in District P-Day days I've attended. The presenters were professional, well-informed, and realistic. The shift from an INRS process to an RTI/MTS system was much needed and welcomed. I'm actually excited to learn more about district-wide initiatives and to be part of this change. He, the presenter, keyed into K-2 grade levels like none before, would love more. And finally, attending the intervention and enrichment to meet the needs of all learning workshops today was very enlightening. It confirmed many of the thoughts I had over the past 20 years in regards to applying my daily thought of what would students learn today and what will I teach my students. These were a few of the positive comments I reviewed from the district survey regarding the multiple-tiered system of supports workshop held yesterday at a Resco School. This is important because providing interventions and enrichment for our K-2 population was a major focus of the curriculum committee, as well as the board and district goals. Additional workshops included teaching reading skills and strategies using novels, coding and design lessons from the technology department, integrating math and science into the middle school curriculum, phenomenon-based STEM learning, there was a trip to Liberty Science Center. Our social studies teachers participated in the Gilder-Lerman Institute and the BBQ project, and counselors worked on dating violence. I would like to acknowledge our leadership team, and in particular, the curriculum directors, that had everything in place before we left for the winter break for a smooth transition into the new year. As Dr. Wonko stated, there was an appellate court decision. Standardized testing is used as a metric for learning, however, there is no single test that determines a student's academic ability. Therefore, in an effort to reduce the stigmatization of high-stakes testing, the New Jersey's appellate court panel has struck down the state's requirement that students must take and pass the controversial PARC standardized tests in order to graduate. Unanimous decision was made public Monday, December 31st, but will not take effect in 30 days unless appealed. It invalidates the state department of education's requirement that students must pass standardized exams, commonly known as the PARC, in Algebra I and English. The court held that the current rules violated the provisions of the Proficiencies Standards and Assessment Act. This statute, enacted by legislator and amended in 1988, authorized the DOE to administer a single 11-grade test in language arts and math to determine proficiency under the state curriculum standards. So what are the key elements of this ruling? The current rules violate the Act because they require PARC administered in 10th grade and algebra, which may be taken in any high school grade, instead of the 11th grade graduation test. Also, administering multiple end-of-course exams for graduation contravenes the legislature's intent that a single graduation test must be administered to 11th grade students. And finally, the regulations do not fulfill the Act mandate that students be provided with three test opportunities. So what does that mean for us? Remember that the PARC is not going away. There's a lot of mischaracterizations out there about the test not counting. All they're saying is the PARC test would not be counted for a graduation requirement. So we will still, in the spring, have the test known as the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment for English Language Arts, for Math, and Science. So what I put in your packet was a couple of important things. Was the press release is in your packet, that is number one. The idea that the propaganda that's characterized in the press, remember, we still have to be compliant with the federal guidelines that say we have to test once in three, four, and five, once in six, seven, eight, and again in high school. We take the federal funding, so we must participate in the test. And then there are some documents regarding what the current rules are for graduation. There will be another state board meeting. I put in the packet how they're reducing the test, the time in units, and also how they changed the name of the test. So it's important. We've worked very hard as a district to make sure that students participated in the PARC. We hope that they continue to participate in the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment in Math and Science in the spring. With that, there is one final fall block PARC test taking place next week. And this is for students that did not pass the Algebra I or ELA 10. And that will be taking place next week. Students who are retaking the course are not required to retest it. They have already passed or have previously taken the assessment and are ID exempt. So who are we looking to take this test right now? Those did not meet expectations. Students that refused, students that transferred into our district from a non-PARC state, or students that transferred in from private parochial schools. So they have to have the opportunity to take that PARC test. So that's where we are with the PARC. I have one more item that I need to discuss outside, is that we did have some of our students before the holiday break, 28 students in our DECA club are moving on to the next round at Keene University. However, the DECA is tomorrow. Normally, we would do a resolution because there's more than two judges. We'd like to send our three staff members, and I'm asking for permission, to send three staff members to Keene University so our students can participate in the next round of the DECA challenge tomorrow. I would notify those teachers tonight if you approve. That would be, that would be great. Okay, so.
More comment on this, Dr. Casias?
Sure, please.
I was thinking about this after reviewing the update on the court case regarding the PARC. I think what's not being emphasized here, which needs to be emphasized, that, yes, the PARC is a measurement of, you know, where our students are. But to me, as a former teacher, it's a measurement of what we need to address as teachers. Where are those students deficient, what areas, and how can we help them? It's not just about achievement, it's about identifying what weaknesses are. And that's not really been emphasized in any of this court ruling. And that's why I liked standardized testing, called PAR, called HESPA, called, I go back to the MBS days. It's a way of focusing on this student is deficient in this area, and how can we best address the deficiency? So it's not always about achievement and graduations, that how can we better address the needs of our students?
Thank you.
And Doc, question?
The PARC test, is that still gonna be rated as far as CUSAC goes?
It will be called the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment. It will be in English Language Arts, Math, and Science, and it will still count towards the CUSAC. It's the first indicators and instruction and program. So it's very important for participation, proficiency, and growth.
Well, that's what I'm saying. And what happened before was, when first PARC came out, it was kind of a disaster because they didn't realize the importance of it. Then all of a sudden, the students realized they have to buy into this if they want to graduate. So it was one of those things where it's important to us to make sure you do well because we have to look good, and it's important for the child because he has to graduate. What I'm a little worried about is taking that part away from it, goes back to the, well, I don't need it attitude. So it makes it a little more difficult to make the importance of this test to our students, I think.
Early on, there were a lot of refusers. We made a big effort to go out and try to get students to take it. As Trustee Finnerty said, it was important because it gives us the information we need as educators to help the students.
No, the test is a good idea. It's a good idea for all of us, is what I wanted.
It got tied to teacher evaluation. And it became the bigger problem. But now they reduced it to 5%, so hopefully.
Doc, Degnan, as I recall, the last time we looked and we took a survey on the number of students who did not take it, the percentage decreased tremendously so. From the first year?
Yes, Dr. Wonko and I sat in principle to go over their accountability profiles, and we are pretty much in the green in most schools for participation.
Thank you, Dr. Degnan. The business office is in the transition period of switching from Systems 3000 to the Genesis system to handle all payroll and human resources. The district-wide radio refresh is nearly complete, and the new radios have arrived. In fact, today, we had training on those new radios by Mr. Carey, and a representative from the company. Work continued throughout the district over the break on the network refresh program. Mr. Figu will share more details of Genesis, the radio update, and the network. Mr. Figu?
Thank you, Dr. Wonko. Good evening and Happy New Year. As you're aware, we're in the process of transferring from to Genesis for our payroll and human resources. Payroll and personnel office met with Genesis yesterday for extensive training, and we're going to meet again next Monday to ensure the design and data accord is accurate and able to meet the needs of our staff. Information will be sent to all staff frequently to keep everyone aware of the updates and proper rollout, as well as directions will be sent. Over break, we sent directions out to our entire staff on showing them how to log into Genesis just so we could check data accuracy, mainly the spelling of their names, addresses, and phone numbers. We did that over break, we did that when they came back, I'm sorry, for Staff Training Day yesterday. Teachers logged in, working out a couple of minor issues of teachers not having emails in the system we're putting in, but everyone's able to log in and check their information for accuracy. Step two of the project is gonna take place after we meet on Monday with training. Again, it's an extensive program that we're doing this. We wanna make sure it's a smooth transition, everyone's on board, and everyone's comfortable as we move forward, so we wanna make sure we do this right with the transfer. So directions will follow after we meet Monday. As Dr. Wonko said, all radios have been reprogrammed. They are in district. Training happened today. Four elementary schools and a high school are completed. The remaining elementary schools will be done early next week. And as for the network upgrade, Bayonne High School, Harris Mann, Bailey School, Mary J., Henry Harris, Robinson, Lincoln, Midtown, and Woodrow are completed with the Wi-Fi update over break. So I'm gonna thank the tech staff for coming over break, making sure that they're on, and we're moving forward with that program as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Figu. As you just heard, we are continuing our quest to move from good to great. And I truly appreciate the tenacious efforts of all to make the Bayonne Public School District the best it could be. I would like to wish everyone a healthy, happy, and prosperous New Year. That concludes my report, unless there are any questions for me. Hearing none, I turn the meeting back to Dr. Mader.
Thank you, Dr. Wonko. Just a housekeeping, each trustee has a calendar. The items that are on there are the resolution that we're passing tonight for our monthly board meetings, followed by our committee meeting dates for the year. This is a draft copy. Also, on the other side is a draft copy of our committees, which after the election of president, we will finalize that. And then also, just a reminder, school board's handout on the mandated training. So everybody's aware of what training they have to do this year. Any questions, just please contact my office, and I'd be happy to assist you. I'd like to turn to the agenda now. If you don't mind, I'd like to go out of order. I'd like to go to communications first. There's an additional communications resignation that I've been asked to add on. So you don't have this. Any questions on communications? Obviously, we could take some of them out here. Anything that's any more confidential would have to wait until we get inside. So are any questions on, obviously, the communications is my notice on the organizational meeting, the results from the county on the school board election. There's a board member vacancy item. There is a lawsuit item. And then there was a letter from a parent that Dr. Wonko got out to you guys today that we added. And then obviously, we're adding this resignation. So if I could have a trustee that would like to move communications?
I'll move.
Trustee Munoz. And is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by trustee. So now we're gonna skip to our consent agenda. Just a reminder, trustee Casias has been to a number of meetings. I'm sure she knows the flow of the meeting. We do a group of resolutions as consent. If there's a resolution on the consent agenda that a board member would like to vote no, please let me know, and I'll move it to non-consent. All right, so I will start with Resolution A1. Questions?
Dr. Mader, I don't know if this matters, but you know, on communications, it says that Barbara Aiden Neckert.
Yes.
Was the one that certified the school board elections, but it's actually Junior Malvenato, who's the new Hudson County clerk.
No, I went by the letter that I received, and she's the one that was the signatory, I believe.
No, it's Junior Malvenato.
And I will make that correction.
It's the two pages.
Just those two pages?
Yeah, and then it's behind. It's that one right there. It's behind all the stuff.
I'll make that correction. What it was is the email that I received from the board of elections was from her.
Oh, okay.
But you're correct, the official package that we did receive. So I'll make that correction. Starting with A1, these are all items that we do at our reorg meeting. It is our bylaws and policies and regulations. Just accepted that. A2 is delegates to the New Jersey School Board Association for this coming year. Is there a recommendation from the board for that position and an alternate?
I did it last year. Michael?
I would love to stay, if you guys don't mind.
It's good luck, sir. Love to have you. I think.
All right. So we will continue to use trustee Alonso. And I believe trustee Desmond was the alternate. So would someone like to volunteer to be?
I'll take it.
A3 is our depositories of school monies. That is a normal resolution that is done. Three. A4 is signatures, and that will be the president and vice president of the board. A5 is delegates to the Hudson County School Board Association.
Is that you, Craig?
That was me, yeah.
Last year, it was trustee Munoz was our representative, and vice president Wilbeck was the alternate. So what is the board's preference?
Do you want to join?
No, I'd like to recommend trustee Valado take my place.
All right, I'll take it.
As delegate to Hudson County.
That's a nice, that's a nice recommendation. All right, I'll take it, yes.
And for the alternate?
I'll be the alternate.
Carol?
Carol. Doing everything this year.
Carol.
I was like, I'll do alternate because I know she won't miss.
2019, Carol.
You're a cow. Okay, A6. A6 is our newspapers. As usual, it's the Jersey Journal and Community News. A7 is our year of meeting schedule for our open workshops and regular meeting, including next year's reorg. This is the same resolution that I've been passing out the last two months, and ask the board if there are any conflicts, please let me know. Not hearing any.
October 30th, a little close to Halloween there. I know there's a lot of.
Well, a little history with that is there was a time when we actually had the meeting on the 31st. And we were highly criticized for doing that.
Right.
Which is why we always got off the 31st and went to the 30th.
Right. Well, the reason, can we move it closer? I know that a number.
A second.
A number of the PTOs have trunk or treats that night and things of that nature that I'm sure many of your trustees.
Isn't it also mischief night?
It is also mischief night.
Do you have a problem with mischief night?
Yes, I don't wanna get egged.
We don't worry about it. I'll tell the truth. You're off your throne, eggs.
But I know there's a lot of trunk or treats and stuff that PTOs.
Okay, board just has to remember, the week before is your school board's convention. I can move it to Tuesday the 29th, if that's what the board would like to do.
All right. I have no problem. I made me. I have no problem.
I mean, it's not much of a change, so forget it then, I guess. At that point. Do you think about it? Is it?
Well, it's not a truck night.
I was thinking the week before, but if it's.
Can't do it the week before.
Well, the problem with the week before is I said.
It's not a truck night, then. You said this thing go do it the wrong.
Guys, we're gonna leave it as it is.
I agree. Okay, then we'll leave it as it is. You'll do some mischief here.
Stay on the.
Now, our next resolution, we're gonna spend some time with. You have a separate package that's clipped, Resolution A8. Obviously, based on reorg meeting, based on our CUSAC assessment, there is a set board training, documents that we always work with. And if you go to the content page, which is about four pages in, I'll bring everybody up to date. Trustee Casias has had the same material the rest of the board has, but I'm gonna go over the addition. Okay? Just look for the clip.
All right.
So we've got four pages in.
Got it. Thank you.
So I'll go down most of these quickly because there's things that we have done already. Obviously, items one and two are codes of ethics for school officials, followed by three, which is also a statute for code of ethics, followed by the requirements for Group One certification. So that's all in your packet. Then you have your board ethics training, fundamentals of school board membership packets. Those were those larger packets that we've used over the last couple of years. Last year, we made an addition. Mr. Delucia worked on a very good handout on how to understand the board secretary report. So everything you really need to note. So everything you really need to know to read the board secretary report is in that handout that he worked on. Okay? So that's the original package that we've used from last year. Now, the additions are, this past year with school boards, there was an ethics for school board officials package, which I've included. There's a 12-month agenda planning calendar, just to remind everybody what we're doing month by month.
Where was that in the package?
It's toward the very end. Which is right. It's this one.
Okay, go ahead.
And then also, from school boards from the convention, I thought might be helpful is number 10 and 11, and it was the role of the board with administration, with the superintendent, and then also with the administrative team. So you'll see in that, there is a sign-in page that you've received it. Obviously, we're all on your best behavior. You could just put them in the middle of the page block, collect them when we finish. Okay, so I just ask everybody to rereview the old information, and obviously, take a look at the new information. I was asked, we really couldn't wait for our January 30th meeting, so I was asked if I would put A9 and A10 on the agenda for this evening. We'll talk about it outside. This is not a big item. I'll turn it over to Mr. Copaz.
We had a retirement as of January 1st in the Title I department, Bailey School. We have an excellent candidate recommended by Principal McCormick and Dr. Deggan. We do not want to wait till the 30th. One, that it is Title I funds, and two, we do need an educator in that classroom, and we feel this is an excellent one, so hope your support.
And then the resolution following is the assignment of that teacher. And obviously, you could see a portion of her salaries, or the total salaries out of the grant, total salary out of the grant. Okay. All right, so that concludes our consent agenda. As long as all the trustees are in consensus, I'll keep everything on consent. Who would like to volunteer to move?
I'll move.
I'll second.
And seconded by trustee Munoz. Okay, I'll ask you now to turn to the non-consent portion, starting with B1. At our reorganization meeting, we always reaffirm our certified public accountant and registered school accountant. Even though last year, this was a two-year contract, we still have to do a separate resolution for this school year. So that continues to be Hoodley and Morrison, PA. Next up is we need to do our chief medical inspector and our medical inspector. So as you know, the reorganization meeting resolution is just a formality by statute. We actually, in May, when we did the resolutions for all our board discretion positions, the doctors are included in that resolution.
So why do we have to do it again?
By statute, it's an item that has to be done at the reorg meeting. And if you remember, that was a contention last year from the audience.
It's statutory requirement.
Yeah.
It went through that last year. It's literally in Title 18 that you have to hire these two positions. I think the debate last year was over salary and was fair and unfair.
So by statute, that's why we're doing it tonight. But to remind you, this was all done in May on the board discretion resolution, which I have a copy of, a question does come up on that.
Dr. Maida, is this-
Sure.
I know there was a point last year made of medical benefits. Are we to assume, or is-
Well, I'll let Mr. Copaz, because we did clean that up, and we made sure that everybody has existing contracts.
It would discretion employees, so we wouldn't really add the discretion of the board. Both of these employees do have member spouse. And the reason why they are on board discretion again is because of the salary change. As you remember, I think our board discretion employees got 2.5% increase.
Right.
So due to that, that they received a salary increase, they would again have to be on, due to that salary increase. It's not all other board discretion employees that receive a contract from September 30th.
So they received a 2.5% last board discretion, correct?
That's correct.
Not now.
Not now.
Not now. Just to make sure.
The board will make a decision on board discretion, and these two employees would be included with the rest of board discretion employees. Will we do that? We usually do that.
So that, last year's board discretion resolution was passed on May 30th, 2000. You remember?
Okay.
And obviously, the doctors were on the second page.
Question, is this something that you could go out to bid for?
Again, the issue last year, when this was discussed, was that there was, you know, there was some difficulty with getting some of these folks over here to fill the positions, and they have to be filled. So to a certain degree, if you can't get anyone over here to do it, my understanding is historically, these people have done a good job, but that's, you know, for the board to decide and the school system. But the bottom line is, you need them, you need to hire them. And, you know, it can go to bid, but I understand in the past, you try to get all of them.
So the answer to the question would be yes?
Well, yeah.
Okay, that's, okay. All right, thank you.
And the only thing I would add is if the board has any thoughts on any changes, that we not wait to the very end of the year, that, you know, we talked about this in finance, about RFPs, that we're going to do them a little earlier, so that members, trustees at the school board convention can possibly go meet and interview and talk to some of the bidders that we have for RFPs. So if we are going to do that, just make sure that we know ahead of time that we're not waiting for the last minute. B3, we always do the optometrist, Dr. Davis. He is, we do the stagger on grades. It's kindergarten, second, fourth, sixth, eighth, and tenth. There's been no change in price. It is still $3.50 per student. The next group of resolutions, anybody from the committee is welcome to add any input. But the finance committee did meet. We went out to, we went out to bid for RFP services. We took all the results of that, came back, and we met with finance. We had a breakdown of everything, starting with architectural services. The committee decided that they're going to continue to stay with DMR, but they are doing a six-month contract. Is that right, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, that is correct.
Next up is B5, engineering services, that we will continue with nuclear engineering on a six-month basis. B6 was legal services, special. They've decided to stay the same, Approuse and McDermott, Mastro, Murphy, and this will be for the calendar year. Take us all the way to the next reorganization meeting, January 6th. B7 was general services. We're going to stay the same, Chason, Lamparello, Mallon, Acapuzo, also to January 6th. I have to do a change, starting with B8. This is a new resolution that we're changing from what you have. It's been decided that we will stay with Fairview Insurance, and we will do that on a six-month basis, which will take us to June 30th. And that's B8. If you give me a second, I will do B9, which is also staying with Fairview, property and casualty and workman's comp, and that's also going to be a six-month contract.
Dr. Maida, after six months, is it all renewable, or they're brought up before the board again?
The finance committee, well, before we get to that point, will come to a decision on whether or not we're going out to a new RFP, or we will rescind the contract, I believe is what we decided.
Yes. Yeah.
What we were finding out was that, when we did it by the year, we just, all of a sudden, it's here again. We never got to research, really got to look at it. That's why we said we were going to go earlier with our, you know-
Yeah, well, we decided, like I said, the finance, like Joe was saying, well, sorry, I trusty Broderick, was that we wanted these people to come in, we wanted to do presentations. We wanted to go at the real RFP, and then really have people come in and present, you know? Even though we put it out for RFP, they sent us a packet, but they really didn't present their ideas and what they were going to offer the district. So we wanted to do it the right way, and started doing that effective July 1.
Like even the last group we brought in wasn't as effective as we wanted it to be, but-
Correct.
All in all, at the moment, that's why we're reducing the time.
So we felt for full transparency, and also to get exactly the presentations that we want, so we know the contract, you know, in and out, we would do it for six months, and it'd give us time to reevaluate.
So I'm assuming that the change, not the change, but to go back to the original, Brown and Brown to Fairview, is because we're getting a better value for our dollar?
I'm sorry?
Why did we change?
We didn't change.
We didn't change. We are going back.
We went from Brown to Fairview.
No, 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 no. We've always been with Fairview.
Okay, well, why does it say Brown and Brown?
Because we were originally going to go back to Brown and Brown, but after the finance committee met, we said, you know what, let's get actual presentations from all these people. Instead of changing, let's give all the presentations, so we can make the best informed decision.
We didn't want to switch based on false promises, or-
Correct.
So we can take a look at it.
So you're going to stick with what you know?
Right now.
And you're going to ask for more information?
And do some more homework.
Presentations.
Correct.
I wasn't quite sure why Brown and Brown was there.
Oh, no, no, yeah, that's why, because, you know, there was a question about rate of reimbursement, you know, did they meet their, did they meet what they actually said they were going to do? We don't believe they did, so we're going to just go out to proper bid and then proper presentations for the entire board.
That's why you're on finance.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
I don't know, like I said, these are all non-consent, so I'll go over each of them. If I could have a move in a second, B1.
These are all individual?
They're individually, for each one?
We can do whatever way you'd like. If two trustees would like to move in second, the whole group, that'd be fine with me.
I think that's a better way to do it. I think that's a better idea.
I'll move on.
So I'll have trustee Alonzo as a move. Who would like to second?
Chris.
I'll second.
Mr. Broderick would like to second.
I'll second.
All right, so that's going to be a move in a second on all the non-consent B resolutions. Okay, so that concludes my resolutions.
No, I need to take special counsel off, depending on if you go off consent, I need someone to be alone.
Okay, just special?
Yes.
So B6, it's on non-consent.
Yes, but we're moving them all, aren't we? Together?
No.
Oh, okay.
Moving them separately.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay, no problem. All right. So that concludes the resolution items. At this time, I'd like to turn to the beginning of the agenda. I'm going to turn it over to the board vacancy committee that met on Friday afternoon, the 21st, I believe, is the session. We'll start a discussion, we'll start it out here. If there's any reason that it needs to follow up and go into closed session, we will. But we're going to start the discussion out here for board member vacancy, member of the committee. I know we didn't have a chairperson, so I will turn the meeting over to the vacancy committee.
Gary, if I may, just one thing. The committee can present on a recommendation, and the discussion should take place in closing, to the extent that there are issues related to their resumes that were submitted and personal information. Just when you, oh, yeah. Just be sure that, the point is for public purposes, that when you vote in public, you state the reason why you're voting for the individual you're voting for on the record. That's all.
So I will turn it over to the committee.
Well, I'll start it off. To my understanding, that Mr. Munoz had indicated that I was in conflict of interest, because my wife works at Rome School. If I'm incorrect, Mr. Munoz certainly don't mean-
Mr. Munoz didn't indicate anything. That was not me.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, there was an indication that my wife was in conflict, because she works for Alana Ryan. And my wife has been teaching in the Bayonne School District for 42 years, at which time she has never educationally interacted with Mrs. Alana Ryan, nor has she been supervised or evaluated by Mrs. Ryan. And I have a letter for that effect, from the principal of Rome School, indicating that my wife has never been supervised, evaluated, or educationally interacted with Mrs. Ryan, so that there isn't a conflict of interest on my part, if it comes to voting for a candidate for the vacancy.
Can I interject something right here? I think it's really important for everyone in this room to know how the committee was chosen. I don't think that was told to anyone.
What chairs?
Trustee Broderick.
Well-
I just think, I think it's important that everybody knows how you chose the committee.
The committee came about, you know, and actually, trustee Munoz helped me with that. I thought it was a good idea, and he said, why don't we use the three people for the, that were chairs of the three committees?
Right.
Personnel, curriculum, finance.
Okay.
And that's how the first three people came about. Then, Dr. Maida, at one point, said we really needed a fourth person, so I kind of went over everybody on the board, and I tried to-
And I'll explain why you need a fourth person, is if you go in and read your policy, your policy says the committee must be four people. So that's something to think about, if we're going to change that policy. But that's why I informed the president that we needed to add a fourth person.
And how I came up with the fourth person, was just trying to pick the people that would be, the person that would be the least involved in the last election, let's say. And I know Mr. Alonzo, trustee Alonzo, had his wife, but she didn't apply for this position, so of everybody that was left, I thought he was the best decision for the fourth person.
Thank you. Sounds like a plan to me.
It's always a plan. We don't know if they're always good.
I'm sorry. Trustee Wilbeck.
No. Would anybody else like to contribute?
Maybe you can tell us the format for, just the process used when you did the interview.
Okay, in the selection-
If everybody was interviewed, that put in an application, is that correct?
Yes.
In the interview process, there were approximately eight candidates that were looking for the position of trustee for the vacancy within the board. Mr. Munoz and the committee members had decided upon doing a 1 to 10 rating, 10 being the best, and 1 being the worst. Of the eight candidates, the three that came to the foreground were Mr. Charles Ryan, Ms. Melissa Godeski Rodriguez, and Ms. Sharma Montgomery. And those were the three that were to be presented to the Board of Education this evening.
Right, with the complete understanding that the Board of Education members did not have to accept the committee recommendation, they could actually go from anyone they wanted off that list. It's not binding.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So, yes, that, those three candidates did come to the forefront of the interview process, but again, those three candidates are not the only ones under consideration, I would imagine, because any board member could say, I think that this is a better candidate, or whatever the case may be.
That's understood, and that's why we're here this evening.
Right.
A question, do you have the ranking, tally?
Yes, I do, I do.
So that we can all, because I-
The ones that came to the foreground were-
That'll be in closed session, in answer to that question.
Okay.
I think one other thing is, I, this was not mentioned, that each one of us trustees did also receive a copy of everyone's resume. We all, not just the committee, but everyone on, with the exception of Ms. Casillas, has received all of the resumes of all the people who were interested in this position.
Well, I was just going to say, if any other member of the committee wants to say something out here, this would be the opportunity. If not, we will do it inside. Any else from the committee? Okay? Any other business before the board outside? Okay? If not, I will take a, I will adjourn the open session to go back inside to a closed session for legal, personnel, and negotiation items. It is 6:18. legal personnel and negotiation items. It is 6:18.